Mayor Buddy Dyer launched Greenworks Orlando in 2007 to transform Orlando into one of the most environmentally friendly, economically, and socially vibrant communities in the nation. To control high energy costs and the adverse effects on public health and the environment, the city of Orlando is undergoing energy efficiency upgrades to 56 municipal facilities. That includes lighting upgrades, HVAC renovations, building automation controls, and other cost-effective energy conservation measures. The city of Orlando spends more than $14 million on energy costs each year. In addition, more than 70% of Orlando's citywide greenhouse gas emissions comes from buildings using dirty energy. How do we fix this problem? Well, you can't figure out where to go if you don't know where you are. First, you have to have an understanding of how your buildings are performing with respect to how the national average is performing. Are your buildings better than the national average? Are they worse? The city of Orlando uses EPA's Energy Star Portfolio Manager as a basis for our energy benchmarking. This provides a miles per gallon for our buildings and compares them to others of similar age, size, and use type. And we also perform in-house calculations that extract from the Energy Star Portfolio Manager, allowing us to delve significantly deeper into the specific elements that we want to try to target for energy-saving opportunities. In 2010, the city received funding from American Recovery Reinvestment Act to improve our municipal buildings. Through energy benchmarking, we identified 24 of the most energy-intensive buildings to invest in, which included fire stations, community centers, public administration buildings, and more. One of the most significant upgrades that the city of Orlando has made to our energy management program has been installing intelligent building controls. Through this program, we can monitor all temperatures, humidities, and CO2 levels in each of our buildings, as well as the current state of our air conditioning and lighting equipment. This allows us to respond to equipment failures in real time, catching events as they occur. This significantly enhances our response times and makes buildings more comfortable. The city of Orlando is in the process of phasing out almost all of the fluorescent and high-pressure sodium old technology lamps with high-efficient LED lighting. There are many benefits to LEDs, including better light quality, it lasts nearly 10 times as long, and significant reductions to the power bills. In the offices where we have installed LEDs, the lighting quality has helped reduce eye strain and improved occupant comfort while also reducing the energy used for lighting by 75%, with an average return on investment of less than five years. In 2013, the city of Orlando partnered with OUC to develop a 420-kilowatt solar array on top of our Fleeton Facilities Building, as well as an additional 12-kilowatt solar array at the city's iconic park, Lake Eola. This revolutionary technology.
Good morning. I would like to welcome you to this workshop, joint workshop, of the Orlando City Council and the CRA on this first Monday in May. I would like to welcome our new city clerk, Celeste Brown, to her first day on the job and first meeting. Welcome, Celeste.
Thank you.
Celeste joins us after 14 years, I believe, with Senator Nelson, and was the head of his state operation, so we were very fortunate that she has chosen to come work with our team. And I also want to acknowledge an ASAP employee that is here with us today, and that would be our former clerk, Alana Brenner, who's sitting co-pilot with Celeste on her first day. Alana, thanks for taking the first day of your retirement and coming back to see us at a workshop, or you just can't get enough, I guess it turns out. Okay, this is all about Project DTO, and as you may know, their work was recently completed with a comprehensive visiting process that will formulate what's next for the next decade of downtown Orlando. We had over 100 volunteers, a 71-member task force, and a 26-member executive advisory committee that has spent the last 13 months getting a lot of resident input, studying other downtown's best practices, and have provided great recommendations to help us make downtown Orlando the best urban environment in America. We're joined today by the chairs, the vice chairs, consultants, some members of Project DTO, and we have a number of items on the CRA agenda and the council agenda this afternoon, which include the vision plan and new community CRA plan. I want to call on Thomas, and Thomas, are you going to recognize the members of DTO that are here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thomas Chapman, our executive director of the DDB and CRA.
Okay, well, thank you, and good morning, Mayor, the members of council, and ladies and gentlemen. And let me just start off by saying on behalf of the entire Project DTO team, I'm absolutely excited to share with you this morning the experience and resulting work products of the wonderfully organic and inspirational journey known as Project DTO Advancing Downtown Orlando. We took flight, as the mayor said, 13 months ago. We started right here. We boarded flight April 2nd of 2014, when more than 100 stakeholders, staff members, and consultants were charged by you, Mayor, to draft the framework which will enable downtown Orlando to offer the highest-quality urban environment in the nation. 13 months, more than 100 meetings, and thousands of meeting hours later, I'm pleased to report that your Project DTO team has artfully synthesized hundreds of bold ideas, desires, and some dreams into a set of cohesive and ambitious plan documents which we are confident will satisfy that charge. Joining me this morning in presenting are Carrie Coats, President of C2 Advisors, who chaired our Executive Advisory Committee; Fred Kinniger, Associate Vice President of Universal Relations at UCF Gold Knights, who chaired the task force; Stephanie Darden, Principal and C-Suite Executive of Prismatic, the DTO marketing consultants; and Whit Blanton, Principal and Managing Partner of Renaissance Planning, DTO's lead consultants. This morning's presentation will provide an overview of the Project DTO structure, as well as the process. It also will provide a detailed review of the two primary work products, those being the vision plan and the CRA plan amendment itself. Nice look to the south at Fire Station 1 and our beloved downtown Orlando. But before we get into the process itself, let's talk about the threshold questions of why this is important, why is it even appropriate to do this type of planning for our downtown. Let me remind you that the last vision plan for downtown Orlando was done by the mayor's downtown strategic transitioning team back in 2003, and of course, that team was famously chaired also by Carrie Coats. So in 2000, it was a 10-year plan, 20-point strategic 10-year plan, and so in 2013, the mayor directed staff to take into accounting of how we had done vis-à-vis that plan. At that time, we found that of 166 recommendations, approximately 132, and that number is now 144, of those recommendations had either been accomplished, were in process, or ongoing. And so a plan now, looking to the future, since it was 10 years since we've had a plan done before in 2013, these are typically done in 10-year increments, starting to reassess, recalibrate, to look to the future. It will allow us to protect our community investment, the investments we've made in the products of the 2003 plan, the investments we've made in community venues, the investment in Sunrail, the investment of the proliferation of mixed-use developments, and the explosion of residential developments in downtown. A visioning effort now allows us to continue to build upon vast success and maintain the very crucial and critical momentum that we're blessed to have achieved based on that plan. This vision also, this vision process also allows us to further strengthen, I should say, DTO's identity, its sense of place, and celebrate its authenticity and diverse character. And ultimately, a visioning process at this point presents once again a prime opportunity to converge with stakeholders and define strategies to thrive economically and culturally in what I think we'd all agree is a constantly and rapidly changing environment. As I said, there are two primary work products that are derived from this initiative. The first is the DTO Vision Plan, a 50-foot aspirational framework which looks into the future, 10 years plus. This plan embraces 10 vision themes that are built upon four pillars, and all are driven by the creative and bold ideas of the stakeholders who've driven this complete process. And secondly, the Community Redevelopment Area Plan Amendment itself. As you know, this plan is the official planning document that guides not only the activities, but also all of the expenditures of a CRA. And this plan was last comprehensively rewritten some 15 years ago. You recall from earlier presentations, the structure of the organization of Project DTO. Underneath the mayor and council and the CRA, there's an executive advisory committee, as the mayor said earlier, of 26 people, and a DTO task force of 71. So we had 97 visionary stakeholders that were actively engaged throughout this process. The task force, of course, broke down into, as you can see, there are nine committees, each of which was chaired by an appointee of the mayor, and each of which was monitored by either the chair, Fred Kinniger, or one of the vice chairs, those being Philip Holt and Brooke Myers. This initiative included considerable outreach to the community and public involvement. And at this point, I'd like to yield to Stephanie Darden to come up and talk to you about that component.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good to start off the week with you. I'm excited to talk today about the public engagement that we, you know, really brought forward as part of Project DTO, and it started really with the task force, many members that are here today, calling upon friends and neighbors, those that have experiences with downtown Orlando, to pick their brains and ask them questions. But all told, there were over 6,100 Orlandoans engaged in this process along the way, and this happened through a variety of materials, including the Project DTO website, which housed multiple online surveys. We also engaged in a really diverse, multifaceted social media initiative as well, that included Google Plus, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stakeholder interviews, you know, as well as events, which were also really critical along the way in engaging in dialogue with Orlandoans. And then focus groups, and the focus groups ranged from actually having downtown foodpreneurs and restaurateurs, even getting into the Main Street Districts, you know, leaders. And then public engagement and intercept events. So that ranged from farmer's market at Lake Eola on a Sunday to a pre-Amway event on a weeknight. And then DTO's Vision Books, Volume 1, which was a really fascinating journey into essentially giving all types of people, you know, an activity book to then begin to share their experiences and feelings about downtown Orlando with us. And then a midday mingle, which also served as a community workshop, complete with nine different crowdsourcing stations. So the fun part about midday mingle, and one of the ways I would point to its being extremely successful, it was 92 degrees that day, for anybody that may not have been there. No clouds, no relief, from about, I would say, you know, truly midday, from like 1:00 to 2:00 PM. We had over 1,000 people participate that day. They came out, they braved the heat, they took their lunch hour to come down, and really began to, I think, help peel away the layers of wants and needs and desires and aspirations for downtown Orlando. And then as a result, if they were willing to come out and, you know, bring their passion to the table, participants received a free DTO t-shirt. And so this is one of the first steps in having people wear their city pride, and so they could choose to do it themselves and, you know, do their own silk-screening t-shirt or grab one and go. And then I mentioned the social media initiatives that we engaged in. One of the very first ones that we did was the Oh Yes, Oh No initiative, and this little card, which many of you, I think, did receive, it seemed simple enough in nature, but the goal with this was to give people, you know, a memento and something that they could reference and remember and utilize in their interactions and experiences with Orlando and other cities. And essentially, by using this card, the Oh Yes side showed things that you really liked about Orlando, or things that we needed more of, if it was an aspirational or a role model kind of visual. The Oh No was, as you might expect, the opposite. Those are things that we need less of, we need to fix, we need to change about downtown Orlando. So those were all really helpful in, you know, helping us kind of weave together this quilt of people's visions and aspirations and love for downtown. And then I also mentioned the downtown Orlando Visions books. There were over 850 books distributed, people were really eager. One of the lessons I learned through this process was that a lot of people had their dog eat their homework. We only had about 115 that came back to roost. However, of those 115, 1,596 different activity pages were completed. There was a wealth of really interesting and really thoughtful and time-intensive product came out of this. You had some people that literally broke down and got into scrapbooking inside of theirs, others were just writing narrative. We reached out to elementary schools in the area, as well as the senior center, so we had a really great assemblage of the quilt of Orlandoans, you know, that were needed to really help us kind of put our future vision goggles on tightly and see where we wanted to go next. And then the task force meetings. There were a variety of them, over 100, to be precise. So, and many of the people, again, that are in the room today were hard at work attending those meetings, you know, vigorously and tirelessly, and that helped us. And one of the activities that we did as part of that was fact-based observations, the use of experts in helping us shape kind of, you know, what some of these thoughts and activities were, and then helping to kind of take that information and distill it into a findings of need, findings of need report, and also a, ah, my brain's missing out at the moment. But again, those were all observations that helped us reach beyond even our day-to-day lives and our day-to-day Orlandoans and kind of peel back the layers to see where else we could go from a role modeling perspective.
Good morning. I'm Whit Blanton with Renaissance Planning Group. And just as we put through the process, it was backed by a lot of analysis and data, and my role as consultant was really to integrate the work of the task force and the committees and look at the feasibility of those recommendations and align things as best as possible. So we had to do that by relying on prior plans and maps and data that has been developed by the city. You have a framework for Greenworks Orlando, a sustainability plan for the city. The Paramore Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan was a guidebook and putting together the plan and was a deep dive into the issues of that neighborhood area. And then the Primary Bicycle Route Plan, we also relied on that. So a lot of different plans and projects came together around a set of data that served as a foundation for the community input and the broad-based input that Stephanie mentioned. I'd like to turn it over to Fred Kittener just to say a few moments, a few words about the task force committee and the work that you did.
Thank you, Whit, and good morning, Mayor Dyer, commissioners. On behalf of the task force members for Project DTO, we want to thank you once again for allowing us to be part of this process of dreaming and providing the vision for downtown Orlando for the next 10 years. As Thomas mentioned, it was just over 13 months ago that we gathered here in this room to get our charge and also a challenge. The charge came from Mayor Dyer when he told us to make sure that we dreamed big on this process as we look at developing the framework for the next 10 years of downtown. The challenge came from Carrie Coats, who had chaired this effort 11 years ago. She reminded us that the infrastructure, the bones of downtown Orlando had been put in place with that plan 11 years ago, but her challenge to us was to make sure that we could help identify what makes up the heart and the soul of downtown, what makes up the heart and the soul of downtown Orlando. So our task force members took that charge, they picked up the gauntlet, and I think they answered the charge as well as answered the challenge with their product that you see here for you today. A couple of things I want to mention about this process and the product and the people. First of all, on the process, like Stephanie mentioned, you had a task force of 75, almost 75 folks doing the heavy lifting here, 100 different committees. You had over 6,000 people who had a chance either publicly or privately to put their two cents in on what they wanted for downtown Orlando, whether they live here, they work here, they visit here, they come here for their education or for their entertainment. There was no reason, no obstacle that prevented anybody from participating in this effort. The product, I think, is phenomenal. You look at the 10 vision themes that came out of the Project DTO, they are definitely the type of things that define the quality of life, the heart and soul for a community. It's the awesome outdoor city, it's the highly-connected neighborhoods and districts, it's those iconic visual identities you find in downtown, it's the stellar arts, music culture, it's preserving our culture and our history and our heritage here in central Florida. Those 10 visions, I believe, can serve as those guideposts for you all when it comes to your policy, your priorities, and your investments for downtown Orlando. And finally, the people that are involved in this process. 75 folks that are gung-ho in their commitment to downtown Orlando. You cannot have a better group of ambassadors, and by the way, folks, they're all much younger than me. I was the old man on the team, so the future looks good when it comes to leadership here for the city of Orlando, especially downtown. But 75 folks engaged in downtown daily, two phenomenal co-chairs in Brooke Myers and Philip Holt, you cannot have anybody better on your team to help drive this product, and nine tremendous chairs that did the work in the trenches with their committees. A great team, and these things take collaboration. This is not the case of a check being written to the consultants, slid under the door, and, you know, so many months later, a product is thrown back over the transom to you. Prismatic, Renaissance, the city team with Thomas and Kelly and Tamara and Stacy Adams were tremendous on this effort. Now, a couple of you are probably starting to wonder, hey, wait, what's a city attorney doing the vision aspect? Well, how many of y'all have ever taken little kids bowling, and you have to put the bumpers in to keep you out of the gutter? Stacy was our bumper. She kept us out of the gutter during this process, but had a great team around this product, which I think leads and gives much greater weight to their finished product. Bottom line, to me, Orlando is the center city for this region. Downtown Orlando defines the promise and potential of this community, just as all roads led to Rome, all roads in central Florida lead to and from downtown Orlando. So on behalf of the members of the DTO task force, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to help define and identify and sketch the future, the next great decade for the city of Orlando. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, so next, of course, the Executive Advisory Committee that we talked so much about that has been working. It took all of that information, those hundreds of bold ideas, and an input of hundreds of meetings and thousands of hours of meetings of the task force committees and the task force itself, and they utilized all of the reports, from the findings reports, and provided masterful oversight and strategic guidance to the project team. Working along with staff and the consultants, the EAC synthesized all of those reports and refined and shaped the message into the vision plan and the DT outlook which you will be exposed to today. And at this point, I'd really like to bring up Carrie Coats, who of course chaired the Executive Advisory Committee. Carrie?
Thanks, Thomas, Mayor, City Council. Well, Fred thinks he was old in the process. How many times are we going to hear, well, Carrie Coats did that 11 years ago, and Carrie Coats did it today? And I'm looking around the room, and I'm thinking, probably it was only Mayor Dyer, Frank Billingsley, and myself that were part of that process 11 years ago, and you'll be wheeling us in 10 years from now in our wheelchairs so that we can lay hands on the next plan.
Speak for yourself on the wheelchair.
Okay, you'll have a walker. I'll have a... You can wheel me in, how's that? But it was an absolute pleasure to once again be part of this process, and on behalf of the EAC, we could not be more proud of what you see in front of you. And everyone has talked about the process, there's not a lot more I can say. I think you're very clear on the mission, who was involved, what we were trying to accomplish. But as I was thinking about this, driving in this morning and reflecting on, you know, why did I decide to do this again, besides the fact that it's pretty hard to say no to Mayor Dyer? But I think Fred touched on this, and it's because these almost 100 people who were actively engaged in the process and the thousands who provided input absolutely love downtown Orlando. And more importantly, I said yes because 87% of the last plan was executed. This is not just a plan that you see in front of you that's going to go on the shelf, and so I'm going to challenge back to you to beat that 87% so that when Mayor Dyer wheels me in 10 years from now, we can say that 90-plus percent of this plan was executed, and that is your charge. Thank you so much for letting me be part of it.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, so you've heard so much about these two work products, it's time now to delve into them. And so at this point, we're going to turn it over to Stephanie and Whit, who will co-present the vision plan itself, and then Whit will seamlessly move into an overview, a fairly detailed overview, of the DT Outlook Amendment itself. Stephanie and Whit.
All right. And again, the vision plan itself, as we've been talking a lot about, has been extremely stakeholder-driven. Transparency, and again, engagement have been the core fundamentals in developing this vision plan. It also builds upon the successes of the last plan, you know, what did we accomplish then, and then how do we continue that chain of events and that momentum forward adding to it? And as Carrie threw down the gauntlet early on, saying, in this process, we have to define downtown Orlando's heartbeat, that is absolutely what's, again, you know, the building block of this. It also capitalizes on emerging trends and develops solutions for challenges that are facing downtown Orlando. So the 10 vision themes, there are, you know, 10 pivotal themes that are fundamentally shaping this vision plan. The first one is, it's an awesome outdoor city. The second is highly-connected neighborhoods and districts. Then it's the best education in Florida, followed by a great place for business, a creator culture, an iconic visual identity, stellar music, arts, sports, and entertainment, a community that takes care of its own, a celebrate our diverse culture and heritage, and then a city built for the future. So the first one we want to share is an awesome outdoor city. Those of us that live here, love here, we know outdoors really is open 365 days a year, and that is part of our identity. And so moving forward, that also has to be something that we leverage and we capitalize. So, and this can be accomplished through providing green spaces for play, recreation, and events, also creating more active blocks and shady streets that invite walking. It's really hard to enjoy downtown and get out and about if you're going to be sweltering in that 92 degrees heat. So downtown can make green and healthy transportation choices easy. Also, walking and biking trips should be safe, comfortable, dignified, and direct. And then places for people to socialize and connect.
And we can't bottle this past weekend's weather all year long, but, so a few changes in the downtown street infrastructure, the lighting, the green shade network, really will go a long way towards greening up Orlando and really addressing a couple of the deficiencies the task force found in looking at downtown and its strengths, and we're not taking advantage of some of those opportunities to link our parks and playgrounds and make active use of those. The next area is the highly-connected neighborhood framework and the districts that surround downtown, and this is critical. As we talk to not just people representing the different neighborhoods and Main Street districts, but just the business owners in downtown and the restaurateurs and others, downtown thrives on its connectivity, on its place of central accessibility, and establishing those strong linkages, whether through bus, bike transit forms, different forms of transit, walking, or by auto, are critical to the success not only of downtown, but also the Main Street districts from Auton Park to downtown south to Church Street to Thornton Park. And we also talked about the need to expand and connect our parks, open spaces, and the linkages between them. You'll see in a little bit that we've put together a vision map that illustrates the idea of a green necklace that connects all these different destinations within the downtown area. And the fact that we have unique districts, I think, represents the fact that we have a very diverse city, a very diverse community. The first one is, it's an awesome outdoor city. The second is highly connected neighborhoods and districts. Then it's the best education in Florida, followed by a great place for business, a creator culture, an iconic visual identity, stellar music, arts, sports, and entertainment, a community that takes care of its own, a celebrate our diverse culture and heritage, and then a city built for the future. So, the first one we want to share is an awesome outdoor city. Those of us that live here, love here, we know outdoors really is open three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and that is part of our identity. And so, moving forward, that also has to be something that we leverage and we capitalize. So, and this can be accomplished through providing green spaces for play, recreation, and events, also creating more active blocks and shady streets that invite walking. It's really hard to enjoy downtown and get out and about if you're going to be sweltering in that ninety-two degrees heat. So, downtown can make green and healthy transportation choices easy. Also, walking and biking trips should be safe, comfortable, dignified, and direct. And then places for people to socialize and connect.
And we can't bottle this past weekend's weather all year long, but so, a few changes in the downtown street infrastructure, the lighting, the green shade network, really will go a long way towards greening up Orlando and really addressing a couple of the deficiencies the task force found in looking at downtown and its strengths. And we're not taking advantage of some of those opportunities to link our parks and playgrounds and make active use of those. The next area is the highly connected neighborhood framework and the districts that surround downtown. And this is critical as we talk to not just people representing the different neighborhoods and Main Street districts, but just the business owners in downtown and the restaurateurs and others. Downtown thrives on its connectivity, on its place of central accessibility. And establishing those strong linkages, whether through bus, bike transit forms, different forms of transit, walking or by auto, are critical to the success not only of downtown, but also the Main Street districts from Auton Park to downtown south to Church Street to Thornton Park. And we also talked about the need to expand and connect our parks, open spaces, and the linkages between them. You'll see in a little bit that we've put together a vision map that illustrates the idea of a green necklace that connects all these different destinations within the downtown area. And the fact that we have unique districts, I think, represents the fact that we have a very diverse city, a very diverse community that offers a lot and a lot of different experiences for people. And so, why not connect those and make them part of the greater downtown Orlando?
Yes, and Project DTO, you know, one of the other additional focuses we had was really helping to define downtown Orlando's identity. And one of the things that we learned through and through, from the very beginning to the very end, is that part of what defines downtown Orlando are our unique neighborhoods and districts, those personality pods, as the identity committee would refer to them. And so, what's interesting about it from an identity standpoint is that we're focused on the CRA today. We have to know and understand that moving forward to build and strengthen our identity as a downtown, it means being inclusive and integrating in those adjacent neighborhoods and districts as well.
This is just an example of what Robinson Street might look like in front of Lake Yola, some of the ideas that came out of the committee. And then Magnolia, a great street with a lot of potential but underutilized today. So, we thought a lot about how to activate Magnolia and create that sort of vibrant, active appeal.
The next is the best education in Florida. And there's no reason why downtown Orlando cannot be the epicenter of STEAM, and this being science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So, expanding education as a centerpiece of downtown, preschool through eighth, community school, which we know is, again, already in the works, higher education and lifelong learning so that learning never ends. It goes from cradle through career. Providing the highest quality public education in the region to attract families to live and stay downtown. Also, opportunities for lifelong learning classes. And then equitable access to technology and resources. There should be no barriers to ensuring that every Orlandoan has access to the best education in Florida.
And a great place for business is a centerpiece of the downtown Orlando vision and a lot of what the committee talked about and the whole team. And I want to stress that when we think about a great place for business, it's multifaceted in how we approach it. It's not just drawing a big anchor tenant downtown with a lot of employees. It's the connective tissue that makes those employees feel valued and feel like they are in a place that they want to stay and continue working. Creating a welcoming business environment, providing clear and simple permitting and fee processes is the basic that we want to evolve toward a higher level of customer service. Energizing DTO's distinctiveness with enlivened public spaces and people who can share ideas and create. And that's the essence of a great business environment, is having that personal connectivity. Committing to tech and entrepreneurship, Orlando has a great foothold and a start in the tech industry, a great platform to extend that and become a preeminent city in the country. And we need to help that along by providing some needed infrastructure in terms of digital access and other support. And then think of retail as an economic development opportunity through the restaurant and food culture. That is our gateway to having more retail in downtown Orlando. We're surrounded by great retail. What's going to make downtown interesting and inviting is using food and the arts and that culture as a gateway towards a more nuanced type of retail.
A creator culture is the next item. And inside of this, it's really, there's great cities all around the country who are capitalizing on the creator culture and the energy that goes along with that. And so, one way that downtown Orlando can also do that, but then best that, would be incentivizing and supporting those culture builders. We have them all around our area, but making sure that they're magnetized to be and attach themselves to downtown Orlando. Also, attracting emerging chefs and restaurants. As Whit mentioned, foodpreneurs are an incredible economic engine and also part of the creator culture. So, making sure that, again, we're creating and holding out, you know, every opportunity possible to have them find downtown Orlando as their home. Also, expanding music, theater, and art options, creating iconic public art installations, which we've already started that with Sea Art Orlando, so keeping that momentum, building and growing. And then making downtown itself a work of art. And so, again, that takes many different forms, but making sure that, again, this, it lives and it breathes a creator culture.
I think this also speaks to the built environment because one of the things that a creator culture needs is affordable space to work and to undertake their activities. And so, thinking through the range of development types and preserving affordable places for people to work and live is a big part of that. An iconic visual identity is the next one. Go ahead. And this was a really important discussion topic because, again, we're talking about the identity of downtown Orlando. And the task force committee focused on this particular effort, kept saying over and over, the last image, lasting image that we see of downtown Orlando is Cinderella's Castle or something like that. What are the lasting images of downtown Orlando? And we have the fountain. We can work on establishing a distinctive architecture, a signature skyline, lighting underneath our roadways where we have the overpasses and the I district, creating lighting and creative lighting and wayfinding that mark our way along throughout downtown. All help to capitalize and capture that unique identity that signifies you're entering a special place, you're entering a great downtown.
Absolutely. So, when we succeed in building an iconic visual for our downtown Orlando, we will absolutely succeed from an identity and a marketing standpoint, too, of making sure people know that I Drive is not downtown Orlando.
And this is just an example of an illustration. You're on Washington Street approaching Lake Yola Park. And just an example of how small actions can really have a resounding success.
The next is stellar mutes, our music, arts, sports, and entertainment. We're aware the purple passion is definitely unfolding all around us. And if you haven't been to a game for, you know, Orlando City, or you don't know someone who has, that's a rarity. So, again, that's just part of this next vision theme. But it's making sure that, again, we are absolutely building and refining and continuing to strengthening those aspects that we already have, building upon the success of the venues and keeping that momentum going strong. So, and this can take many forms, but one of which would be a signature event or festival. I just got back from New Orleans Jazz Festival, and the economic impact that that has on that city was undeniable. So, something like that, bringing that into our downtown Orlando will have an absolutely, you know, economic driving impact. High-profile museum, attracting one of those to our downtown urban core. Also, a variety of special events, keeping, making sure that three hundred and sixty-five nights a year is an event night downtown. And then prominent presence in regional tourism and marketing. So, we need to make sure that with those that are around us, be it the EDC or Visit Orlando, we are absolutely a part of their marketing vernacular and their assets, and they are doing everything they can to ensure that this is part of what they're promoting when it comes to our central Florida region as a destination for, again, the music, arts, and entertainment.
And I would just say, this is another example of building on our assets, where Orlando has already has a distinctive identity and a talented workforce that surrounds downtown Orlando for this. And this is an example of what the ultimate I-4 may look like in the future as it's activated with LED lighting underneath. This district is an important gateway and linkage between the entirety of downtown, whether you're on the east side or the west side, to make that a more welcoming and inviting space. A community that takes care of its own was a significant part of our discussions as well. We had a social fabric committee that delved a lot of hours into this issue. And it's a recognition that downtown is for everyone, and it serves multiple needs. It's not just a place for work or a place to go hang out at Lake Yola. It's a place where we have a lot of social institutions and faith-based institutions as well. And they provide great services and do good work. And so, building on that success, enhancing that, leveraging those facilities and people engaged in that to address tough issues like homelessness, aggressive panhandling, and the fact that people feel isolated or can feel isolated in downtown, depending on where they live or where they work. Breaking down some of those barriers. And the committee has talked about a week of volunteer activities and expanding on what's in place today, preserving historic buildings and capturing that essence of what makes downtown Orlando great. And then working on neighborhood beautification, gateways, wayfinding, and enhancements to ensure that the quality and the character serves all neighborhoods.
Celebrate our diverse culture and heritage. Something else that came out of the identity committee's discussion amongst others was that we have to understand and know our unique heritage and our history. It's there, it exists, but very few are aware of it. And we're definitely not capitalizing it to its fullest extent and making sure that it's a part of, a part of our culture and a part of what downtown Orlando stands for. So, part of that means Orlando's diversity is an asset that strengthens the community economy and creates opportunities. So, we need to absolutely ensure that we are leveraging that to its fullest potential. Also, foster a culture of respect in an environment that celebrates diversity. Our diversity makes us unique, and it really makes us a welcoming place, a place of opportunity for all. Downtown Faith Leaders Group, as Whit mentioned before, that's a way of really bringing together those that, you know, have their fingers on the pulse of the spirit of our community and making sure that they're a big part of the solutions and the promises moving forward. Making sure that we're also looking at volunteerism as a phenomenal event and activity to engage Orlandoans and bring them together. And then multicultural festivals. We have many of them already in our downtown Orlando. And again, celebrating our diversity means making sure that we're embracing those multicultural opportunities.
And finally, a city built for the future is an underpinning of the entire vision. And this is really speaking to the fact that Orlando is one of the more sustainable cities and has aspirations of being the most sustainable city in the country. And there are ways to introduce those aspects of sustainability so that we do leave a lasting legacy for future generations. We've talked a lot about the possibility of more farm-to-table opportunities through urban farming and local food hubs in the downtown area, expanding recycling efforts to businesses throughout the downtown area, and thinking of downtown as an energy-efficient eco-district where people can pedal, walk, use solar power, and other types of facilities and treatments to reduce the energy footprint. And ensuring that we have mixed-income housing options. So, as people grow older, they have an opportunity to stay in downtown Orlando. As people raise a family, they have an opportunity to stay in downtown Orlando. And as people struggle with financial challenges, that they can still remain in downtown Orlando. And examples of just activating our parks, this is the intersection of Pine Street and Orange Avenue, a vacant lot today, but using this as a way to expand our visual identity and also create natural places that are full of shade and light. So, thank you, Stephanie. I'm going to walk you through the Community Redevelopment Area Plan update, and you'll see a lot of these themes reinforced. And thinking about a downtown redevelopment effort and what we're trying to put together here reminded me of a plaque that used to be on a friend's desk, and it said, "The secret to success," and turn over. And you turn it over, and it said, "Hard work." There really is no silver bullet. There really is no one thing that we need to do to ensure downtown Orlando's lasting success. It's hard work, and it's a testimony to the work of the task force and the Executive Advisory Committee and the hard work that they put in to deliver this vision and plan. The downtown outlook is your legal basis. It's your legal foundation for allocating revenue within the downtown Community Redevelopment Agency area. And that boundary is fixed, and that's where your money is used. But we've taken a very expansive view of how the vision and how downtown Orlando work together with surrounding neighborhoods. We've talked about this being a ten-year plan, and that's really, I think, the focus of the vision effort. But the CRA plan, the redevelopment plan, has an effective life through the year of 2042. And we've broken it down into these seven chapters, which I'll walk through, and Thomas will come up to talk about the last two. But essentially, we have introduced a linkage between the ideas and concepts and findings of need through the visioning process into a plan that embodies those and carries them forward. I alluded to the vision map earlier, and I hope you can see this. It's really meant to just highlight a few key overarching ideals for downtown Orlando. First is a walkable and accessible downtown. And we've mentioned Robinson Street and Magnolia, but they're by far not the only streets that we would like to focus some attention on to ensure that highly connected, comfortable space to get around that last mile of transportation, whether you're driving in, coming in on Sunrail, or just going from neighborhood to neighborhood. You see a lot of green on this map. That's one thing that downtown Orlando is lacking compared to its peers. And we've envisioned a green, cultural, and open-space network that connects places like Orlando Wetlands Park, Festival Park on the east, Xena Riley Park, and Lake Ivanhoe on the north, and providing that through shade, through lighting, through venues that are interesting and exciting, and well-defined focal points. And finally, the interneighborhood and interdistrict connectivity, extending limo, hospital to hospital, extending bike networks along Westmoreland and along Robinson Street are examples of that. And the greater downtown Orlando discussion, you see in red the CRA boundary. That's the focus of the downtown outlook redevelopment plan, but it's recognition of a influence zone surrounding that that we're calling greater downtown. And if you think about that, that's fifty thousand residents versus fifteen thousand residents within that CRA boundary. That's a hundred thousand employees versus the forty-five or so thousand employees within the CRA. And so, from a marketing perspective, that's an important thing to show as being a highly connected part of downtown. And I like to talk about, we even have a bowling alley within all that. So, you have almost anything that you can imagine. And there's a population boom that's happening in downtown, and it's captured by this neighborhood area with an incredibly diverse population and diverse neighborhood districts. The foundation of the CRA plan is built on four pillars, and we struggled with how best to frame these. And we just decided we're going to carry these through every aspect of the plan because they really don't belong in one chapter. Sustainability, you'll see that in the transportation recommendations, and you'll see it elsewhere. Livability, the activities that are happening in downtown Orlando and the quality of life. Economic competitiveness, and then finally, health and wellness, reflecting the important emphasis of the Paramore Neighborhood Comprehensive Plan, as well as the two hospitals and the emerging presence of UCF in Valencia downtown. In terms of planning for downtown, we have framed it into these several planning area districts. And these districts are meant to guide programming activities and planning activities of the CRA staff because it's not a one-size-fits-all downtown, and there are distinct needs that happen throughout the area, whether you're in the Paramore Neighborhood area or whether you're in the Thornton Park, South Lake Yola area. And I'm going to walk you through each one of these districts very briefly, just to highlight a few of the issues and opportunities. The north quarter, up towards Lake Ivanhoe on the northern end of the CRA, is probably the fastest-growing residential part of downtown, but its growth in residential areas is outpacing its supply of parks, for example. And it also has a big disconnect between the corridor of downtown with Colonial Drive and the high-speed traffic and changes that are going on there. There are some great opportunities, though, through the I-4 Ultimate Plan, through some resurfacing that the FDOT is getting ready to do on Colonial to break down some of those barriers, provide some park opportunities, and also provide an important gateway linking Ivanhoe with downtown Orlando, Lake Ivanhoe with downtown Orlando. The Lake Yola Heights District on the east side is an established, single-family residential area. And the plan calls for preserving that, but also recognizing that this is an important aspect of downtown's visual identity, is getting access to Lake Yola. And so, I've talked earlier about Robinson Street as a barrier and breaking down that barrier through some innovative design treatments in front of Howard Middle School and in front of Lake Yola are central to that. But just connectivity of this highly walkable area and overcoming some of the challenges that we have with Rosalind and Magnolia and with Robinson Street as well. The South Yola District is a booming residential area. It's a little higher density. It's got a different character and scale than you have for the area to the north of the lake. But this is also capturing the Thornton Park Main Street District as well. And so, you have a lot of great destinations. And I will argue that the greatest street that downtown Orlando has from just a pure enjoyment is Central Avenue, and that cuts right through here. And it's, we want to carry that framework of Central Avenue forward to other areas. The challenges here are limited parking, so we have to work creatively to provide information and technology and assistance to people so that they can reach their destinations in this area as well. The Lake Lucerne District on the south side has some obvious recognizable barriers in the 408 and I-4 that provide barriers and accessibility to this area. And one opportunity is to extend the Orlando Urban Trail down through the Lake Lucerne area to tie in to some of the employment and residential areas, both to the south and the north. This is an area that is an emerging growth area, strong growth opportunity, and has a tremendous visual iconic identity for downtown Orlando. And of course, the Central Business District is the heart of downtown Orlando in terms of its employment and many of its entertainment options. But it's a long district, and it feels long when you're walking along Orange Avenue and Magnolia. That'll be solved in part by the private sector activities that are filling in that area at the Tribune site and other locations along there. But we have to work extra hard because of the distance there. Efforts to improve upon limo service, making that more efficient, modernizing limo service and introducing some new options are ways to do that, as well as treating Magnolia Avenue as a new signature street. The Paramore Heritage Business District on the west side of I-4 is certainly undergone a lot of changes in the last several years, but it is an important aspect of downtown with a lot of institutions, entertainment activities, and it is a gateway that links both the residential area with the employment destinations on the other side. We have tremendous venues in this area, and it's an important area to ensure that we have great accessibility to. And the Ultimate I-4 will help contribute to that accessibility. And the Paramore Heritage Neighborhood District is an area that we have separated out with the goal of preserving the residential character of the neighborhood district there, building upon the new pre-K through eight school. And... upon the new pre-K through 8 school, and establishing that as a health and wellness target area with gateways that draw people in from the Orange Blossom Trail and Citrus Bowl into the cultural and sports entertainment corridors that I'll show in just a moment. As we walk through downtown, either on foot or on bike, you can see we did a number of tours, we assessed all the different challenges and opportunities and looked at where are the strategic opportunities, from catalyst sites to transformation of streets. And I'm just going to walk you through, as quickly as I can get through it, a few key areas of how the downtown outlook plan is structured. Each of these are sections within the Issues and Opportunities chapter of the plan. For transportation access and connectivity, again, this is embodied in the vision plan, create a safe and well-balanced street network where we have inviting and memorable streets throughout downtown. Opportunity two is to make downtown travel and parking intuitive and easy through the use of technology, through the use of providing valet parking and providing additional parking where warranted. Opportunity three, champion the development of an integrated multimodal transportation system. This will not all be borne on the back of the downtown CRA, but it certainly will be a contributing partner because so many people want to reach this destination. And that entails expanding Sun Rail, expanding limo, and expanding east-west travel options to connect UCF and other places like Winter Garden into downtown Orlando. Opportunity four, develop a well-connected bicycle pedestrian network. I ride my bike into downtown Orlando when I'm not dressed like this most days, and we've got a great biking environment, but there are many gaps and opportunities to improve that network so that it's seamless for all parts of downtown and surrounding neighborhoods. And to advocate for a strong partnership among transportation projects, Robinson Street's a great example of that. It's owned by FDOT, so they need to be a partner in that, just like they have been on Orange Avenue and other signature streets. Parks and open space, there are four main opportunities identified here, which I've touched on earlier, create and enhance our open spaces. We have a fabulous Lake Iola Park. There have been some discussions about redesigning that park to activate the amphitheater more, and also, where possible, to expand that park and make it more of a seamless park that filters into the CBD to the west. But we can't just rely on Lake Iola Park, so looking at the north quarter and other parts of downtown is an opportunity to develop new park space that can be programmed and fill some of the demand that's clearly there for Lake Iola. Opportunity two is establish a continuous green and open-space network. I talked about that earlier. From West Moreland Avenue to Robinson Street to Summerlin to others, we have a great opportunity to green up downtown Orlando. And the stormwater ponds being used as urban amenities like they have at Orlando Wetlands Park. Creating signature gateways and entrances into downtown, Lake Ivanhoe and Lake Lucerne are obvious, but we also need to look at our east and west. And activating the vacant and underutilized areas, as you walk around downtown, you'll see a few of those, and there are great opportunities for urban markets, creator opportunities, and the like. Housing in neighborhoods, downtown is vibrant when it's an 18 to 24-hour city because people live there, and that's been a push here in downtown Orlando for a number of years now. But we now have to think about the affordability of housing, and we now have to think about the preservation of housing where appropriate. So thinking about those significant structures and historic assets that we need to honor is a big opportunity there. Beautifying and revitalizing our neighborhoods, promote cohesive neighborhood identity and neighborhood supportive services, and a lot of that is transportation, but it's also reaching out to the elderly and to the economically challenged. In this chapter, we have a neighborhood impact element that addresses the potential of future impacts on neighborhoods and minimizing those to the extent possible, but also establishing a resident relocation policy and an aging-in-place policy so that people can live and stay in the community. From an arts and culture standpoint, five big opportunities here, supporting a diverse arts and culture opportunity and growing that through a downtown cultural master plan and also through educational opportunities. Developing progressive arts infrastructure and technology, high-profile, distinctively-designed museum is one part of that to pursue. I was at the Regional History Center, and that's another anchor for that, but also the digital aspects through LED lighting and just providing the infrastructure for that. Fostering a creator culture, which Stephanie talked about earlier. Again, low-cost live-work opportunities are a big part of that success. Encouraging and promoting a variety of events, from festivals to unique social events, and then encouraging funding for the arts. That's something, just like transit, it goes hat in hand every year, and providing a little bit more stable, dedicated arts funding is a key to that. The plan continues, the cultural corridor from the prior downtown redevelopment plan, essentially along Magnolia, and then extending west into the creative village around Lake Dot. The active venues there are the Mad Cow Theater, City Arts Factory, and the Gallery at Avalon Island, but also the anchor is the Downtown Performing Arts Center, Dr. Phillips. From a sports and entertainment standpoint, three main objectives are identified as opportunities here, supporting the development and growth of the sports and entertainment corridor, which I'll show in just a moment, and linking that into the rest of the downtown through pedestrian enhancements and branding it and promoting it. Opportunity two is raising the community profile through a media guide, banner program, wayfinding, smartphone apps, and that's building on the success of the two bowl games, the soccer, the magic games, and so that we use that as a platform to talk about the greatness of downtown Orlando. And expanding its economic impact through promotional opportunities and complementary, non-competing activities. This is an illustration of the sports and entertainment corridor, extends along Church Street, and ties into the Downtown Performing Arts Centers. You can see we have a north, south, and an east-west series of networks that tie in downtown to these unique venues. From a marketplace standpoint, retail and services, man, we spent a lot of time talking about retail. The five opportunities here, though, are all meant to enhance and strengthen Orlando's unique marketplace identity, which isn't just retail, but acknowledges that we need more retail. Increasing the number of shoppers through hotels, conference space, the culinary arts district that I talked about earlier, and a more diverse housing mix. We need more rooftops, and as that happens, you'll see those opportunities emerge. Making the downtown experience easier and more satisfying. Parking needs to be easy, seamless, intuitive. Transportation networks, easy, seamless, and walkable. Opportunity three, pursuing the diversification of retail opportunities. And I said earlier, thinking of culinary arts as a retail, as an economic development tool is a big part of that. Improving the image awareness and orientation of downtown. Going under those overpasses from I-4 is currently an impediment. Lighting and enhancing those is job number one over the next five to six years. And improving the stock of retail-ready space, retail and facade improvements, and working with the business owners and renters to eventually evolve the downtown mix of businesses so that it's a more diverse brand of business establishments. From an education and social fabric, we have five opportunities. Creating a culture of respect and an environment that celebrates diversity. Addressing social issues that impact the experiences of downtown business, residents, and visitors. Permanent supportive housing is a centerpiece for that, for the homeless, and that initiative is recognized in the DTO outlook plan. And also bringing back community policing and ensuring that cops on bikes and helpful ambassadors for downtown are part of that user experience. And creating more opportunities for social engagement and healthy living, family-oriented events. We've talked a lot about playgrounds that are active and available for people with different abilities, and we don't have that in downtown Orlando. Improving the perception and reality of public safety, strengthening community policing, as I alluded to there. And the business environment, capitalizing on the continuing urbanization trend. People are flocking to downtowns not only to live, but also for the experiences that they bring, and providing those diverse housing options and encouraging neighborhood supportive retail. Attracting more companies and employment, that is a big part of it, and we have the creative village as an opportunity and catalyst for that, and continuing to work on recruiting additional corporate anchors like we did for Red Lobster. And enhancing the branding and increase awareness, working with regional marketing partners, Visit Orlando and others, EDC, to have one brand, one identity, one marketing strategy with distinctive aspects that celebrate downtown Orlando. And attract and retain our small businesses. We can't forget about those who are here, those who've built up their businesses here, and the next Fortune 500 company that is just getting its start here in downtown Orlando. And that's working with them to make downtown an inviting business climate so that they can grow and stay and thrive. And embrace energy conservation and green building and extending that into the business sector. Now, I'm showing you a lot of maps. This one's a little bit distinctive, but as we put the plan together, we felt like we needed a physical aspect to guide downtown redevelopment, and so we put together an urban design framework. And I want to stress that this is meant as a guide. We are not rewriting the city's codes just yet, but it's meant to be a guide to help the staff consider revisions to the code as it relates to the downtown environment. And we started by looking at the different character areas, and you'll see that we have a character, these are different from the planning areas because we have one that goes along the Colonial Drive Highway 50 corridor, and we have another one that covers the sports entertainment district. But these were meant to reflect the distinct character and scale and types of uses that you have throughout downtown. And they will inform decisions to be made about revising the city's code, but this provides a way forward by proposing guidelines for building scale, form, and composition that articulates areas of the public realm. Inviting public spaces, pedestrian access, open plazas that are able to be programmed and activated. Providing for street blocks and other amenities, setbacks, and outdoor spaces so that we celebrate the downtown culture and provide those opportunities for greening up downtown Orlando and adding lighting. We can't do that if we don't have the right-of-way. This identifies an organized street typology that I'll show you in a minute that emphasizes connectivity and multimodal access. And it suggests the creation of different types of open space to accommodate the needs of downtown residents. So this is a guide for where our taller buildings will go, where the types of construction materials will be different and distinct, and where we'll preserve the single-family, one-story neighborhood areas. The urban design framework touches on streets and access, street scape, buildings, and open space as its main elements. And I know it's a little hard to read on this map, but the urban design framework, you can't start without a clear understanding of how your street network is functioning. And we've organized the downtown into A, B, and C streets, with A streets being the pedestrian-prioritized, walkable, memorable streets. The B streets have a balance of mobility and accessibility, so that's where you would see, on Robinson Street, for example, the need for better bus service and maybe an enhanced cycle facility, wider sidewalks, but it's still a street that will probably travel a little faster than a couple of other streets downtown. And then your C streets are the ones that are connecting to I-4 and access roads, whether they be Anderson and South Street, or whether they be Garland and Huey. There are not too many of the C streets that are meant to be higher-speed roadways. We have a preponderance of A streets planned for downtown. Thomas?
Thanks, Whit. Florida statute requires that each plan, each Community Redevelopment Area Plan update, include an accompanying financial plan. And in Chapter Six, you will find that required financial plan for the DT outlook. As you can see, it provides estimated revenue throughout the life, the life cycle of the CRA, which is through January 1st of 2042. Also shows available revenue, which is net of all the debt service and bonds and whatnot, internal city loans, any incentive payments, and all the operating expenses or any other obligations, and financial obligations, I should say, of the CRA. And so with staff consultants and CRA staff working very closely under the guidance of staff of the CFO's office, the total estimated cost of redevelopment outlined in Chapter Seven, which will come up next from the DT outlook, exceeds $445 million. As you can see in the table to the right...
There's an extra zero on there, right? That's 400 million, not 4 billion, or 4...
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, there is. We wanted to know if you were paying attention, that you always, someone caught that.
The commas are in the right place.
Just 445 million. Not, it's 445 million, we're not talking Bs today. As you can see in the table to the right, though, when you look at the projected tax increment revenue and net of all obligations and see what's available for new projects and programs, in the first few years, it's very little. But as we move forward, the bottom line there exceeds 534 million. And again, we were working with the CFO's office. These are very conservative but realistic projections. Obviously, there are almost, there's a litany of variables that make it very difficult to be precise in these. But again, conservative but realistic, we've utilized 3% annual growth rate for expenses and only a 2% annual projected growth rate for revenue. And the final chapter of the DT outlook is the implementation matrix, a checklist, if you will, which takes all of that information from Chapter Four and breaks it down by categories, describes each project or initiative or proposed program, assigns a timeframe to it with a short, mid, or long range, provides the cost estimate for that. And in my, from my perspective, a very important piece, then, the last, the final column on that matrix will list potential public and private partners that could or should be involved in that particular initiative or project. That's emphasizing the critical importance of the continuation of what we call the P3, the public-private partnership, if you will, which is necessary in order to achieve optimal success of the implementation of this plan. The strategic alliances and collaborative partnerships, which have been a hallmark of this administration, must continue if this plan is to be realized maximally. And so there's a lot of procedure matters, and Stacy would shoot me if I didn't go through these the right way, and so please bear with me. But as you can see, on April 6th, the AC recommended approval of the DT outlook. April 20th, you accepted the plan and forwarded it to MPB for purposes of determining whether the DT outlook is conformed to the growth management plan. On April 21st, MPB did affirm such conformance. On April 22nd, the CRA Advisory Board recommended approval of the DT outlook as well. The required notices were sent out on April 17th to the pertinent taxing authorities and on April 22nd. Public notices for public hearings, which will occur later today, were placed and published in the Orlando Sentinel. So from a timeline standpoint, later today at 2:00, under the CRA, you will be requested to accept the vision plan and approve the DT outlook plan amendment and forward that to City Council for its approval. Also, under CRA, you will be requested to approve and make a recommendation of approval regarding the amendment to the trust fund ordinance and also forward that to City Council for consideration for approval. Then, under City Council, under hearings, there'll be a request to adopt the resolution approving the DT outlook plan as a component of that public hearing. And then likewise, under hearings ordinances and first reads, the first reading of the amendment to the trust fund ordinance will take place after the public hearing. Subsequent to that, on May 18th, it's projected that, again, on the second reading, you have the second reading of the amendment to the trust fund ordinance, again, accompanied, which comes after a public hearing. So at this point, I'd like to ask, I think Stacy and Kelly are going to provide you with the prototypes, the very first off-the-presses hard copies of the vision plan itself, which we think is, we hope that you agree, is a very nice document. And as staff is distributing those books, I'd like to, Mayor, if I could, engage in a few things. First, there are several people here from this process, from the DTO journey, who's taking this journey with us. I'd like everybody to stand for just a minute and allow you to see, as to be seen, you've been on this plane as we've been riding for the last 13 months. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'd like to join the mayor in thanking the stakeholders who sincere and authentic passion and innovative creativity have clearly illuminated, we think, a brilliant and exciting future for our beloved downtown. Also, I'd like to thank our consultant team consisting of Renizance Planning, Prismatic, actually, Rose Brito, Crossroads, and Studio JTK for their disciplined and very professional guidance and input throughout. I'd like to thank Brooke Monnet, our fearless leader over the economic development, for her steadfast support and counsel, particularly to Kelly and I anytime we got nervous about running off the rails and making sure that we were all right. As I would, I'd like to thank several other members of CRA and city staff, particularly Dean Grandin and several members of his outstanding planning and division staff, whose expertise has provided expert guidance and perspective and overall collaboration, which enhance, we think, the outcome. and overall collaboration, which enhance, we thank, the outcome of this process. The many other city and CRA staff members who contributed throughout the process, we thank them as well. Many of them are noted within the vision plan that you're now looking at. But I'd also like to stop for a moment and especially thank Assistant City Attorney Stacy Adams and CRA Project Manager Kelly Moody, who I would ask to stand again. These ladies have maintained vigilant oversight, monitoring, providing crucial feedback and input on a granular level throughout this process. Their combined efforts have ensured not only that we've stayed the course, but we've got it right. And I think they're now surrogate sisters, joined at the hips henceforth and for half and forever. I'd ask you to tip a hat. So, in conclusion, Mayor and members of the council, Project DTO advancing downtown Orlando, we believe, has produced two highly valuable work products: the Vision Plan, which will inspire, motivate, and nurture the momentum prior plans have produced and that we're so fortunate to have in downtown; and the DT Outlook, the Sixth Amendment to the plan, a detailed guide to achieve that vision created by 100-plus stakeholder volunteers, staff, and consultants. But it's reflective, as you have learned, of the thoughts, ideas, desires, and desires of hundreds of contributing individuals who comprise this wonderfully insightful and inspirational initiative. The DT Outlook wisely builds upon the previous downtown outlook of 2000, and in fact incorporates that plan's two guiding principles, those of sustainability and livability, and adds the principles of health and wellness and economic competitiveness to form the four pillars upon which the ten vision of this plan are built. The Project DTO team believes we have accomplished the directive from our mayor of creating a framework which identifies the route to achieving the highest-quality urban environment in the nation. We hope that you will concur. And that, Mayor, concludes our presentation.
Thomas, Kerry, Fred, Brooke, Brooke, Stephanie, Whit, Stacy, Kelly, and everybody involved in the effort during the last 13 months, incredible work product. I think we truly do have a path, a vision plan for moving our community forward. And the thing that I felt was most important was that this be a stakeholder-driven process with people that deeply care about our downtown and our community and not simply be a hired consultant from somewhere outside of Orlando coming in and giving us support. And I truly believe this work product is a lot of sweat, tears, and blood from people who care deeply about Orlando. And just as importantly, we have the buy-in of so many people. Things are much easier to accomplish and get done. People feel like they have some ownership and are going to be the cheerleaders for an under-I project or redoing Magnolia or Robinson, which may have some opposition somewhere down the road. But since we have a recommendation from a group that studied, then that validates some of the areas that we're going. And that's how we used the first strategic plan. I was always able, and the council was always able, to point back and say, hey, one of our priorities is to retain the magic and build an arena, or to do, have a movie theater downtown, or have a supermarket downtown, and expand the transportation options in our downtown. So I think this product is going to give us that same opportunity over the next 10 years. And it's nice to see also that we're going to have more money generated than we're planning on spending over the next 30 years. So that's a good thing as well. So I want to deeply say thank you to everyone that has worked so hard over the last 13 months to truly give us a vision for having the best urban environment of any downtown in America. Commissioner Sheen?
Well, Mayor, I wanted to echo a lot of that and say, even though you all did give me one, what I like to call the "oh crap" moment with filling in Lake Yola, everybody freaked out because that got released. So, you know, again, sometimes we get some out there ideas, but, you know, but looking at this plan now that I've gotten to see it, I love the seven distinct areas and seeing that, you know, that there are different fields of the different parts of downtown. That was great. And it does, like I say, urban farming. People thought I was insane with the urban chickens, but now seeing that there's a movement behind that. So things we can point to and say, yeah, people are doing this all over America. This is, these are accepted practices. Sheen's just not crazy, or one of us isn't just crazy. There is buy-in to that. So, thank you so much. And Jeffrey, did you come up with those swans at Lake Yola? Was that your-- no, wasn't you? Okay. Love that. So again, some really, really cool ideas. And yeah, while Lake Yola is our, you know, signature park, there is so many opportunities to create gateways across the city. And I'm so glad to see a lot of really good ideas on that, too. So again, great job, y'all. Like I say, I was a little bit worried, some of the things I heard coming out that got released beforehand, but again, really, really cool plan. And thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
Let me also say thank you. I appreciate it. That's, you know, the three commissioners can have impact on the downtown corridor, which has been unique in terms of our development over the past 20 or 25 years, that downtown is really the vision of the mayor and shared by three commissioners in terms of the area. And so I think it's important, Mayor, in terms of your leadership, and I appreciate that. I think it's important that we have, we had a framework, and from that framework, accomplished a great deal from it. And so now we have a framework a little bit broader. A little bit like Commissioner Sheen, when some of the ideas get leaked out early and don't get vetted, I guess I probably, the next thing I know, we have a beach at Lake Ivanhoe. And I'm thinking, man, that's-- who recommended that? Well, DTO recommended that. Wait, you've got to be kidding me. But out of great creativity comes some real good, solid ideas. And so we appreciate that from that standpoint. So I would like to go through the whole list of names, and the mayor has done that much faster and better than me, so I won't pinpoint anybody, except to say, it's a wonderful team effort. And when you get the buy-in from the community, it does give us a framework that we can move down and really impact what we want to, what we want to see this community in 10, 15, 20 years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo the mayor and my cohort. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and your efforts. We truly know where there's a lack of vision, the people perish. And with this blueprint and this community action plan, it gives us direction on where we need to go. Even if one is absent, the plan is put forth. And they always say, what's the reason behind insanity? And it's doing the same old thing, the same old way. So what we had about 10 years ago doesn't work anymore. It works, but we always have to enhance that vision and enhance that plan. So, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart also for all your efforts and time away from your families and your careers. I know it's a lot of meetings, and I'm also with the mayor. I thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just for the record, I don't consider downtown just the three commissioners that happen to represent it, but all six of the commissioners. So downtown is for everybody, including Lake County, Seminole County, and Osceola County. It's our central cultural area, sports and entertainment area, so it's a downtown for everyone. Okay, with that, thank you, Thomas, and everyone involved. That will conclude our workshop
If all my DTO friends could take conversations out in the rotunda, we have another meeting.
Okay, we are going to convene the agenda review meeting for May the 4th, 2015. And I will note that Thomas went over the, I guess, six items or so that relate to the workshop that we just had. So we have three on the CRA agenda, we have one on the hearings agenda, and we have one on the hearings ordinances first read. And then on the ordinances on first read, the nine of them, I think all nine relate to about a year ago, asked Byron and legal staff to start culling through our ordinances and updating them and looking for provisions that are obsolete or in conflict with other provisions. So we have a series of those that'll be coming forward. So we have the first nine today. I was asking them for some of the examples. I think one of them is that we have a requirement by ordinance that we keep all of our records on microfilm, and we have not been doing that for quite some time, nor do I think we want to do that with the technological advances. So that's an example. I think when we did this one time before, there was still on the books when I got here, a provision that prohibited tying your horse to a post in downtown because they were afraid that the horse might try to leave and pull the post down, have the awning fall down, or something like that. But we haven't had that many horses tied up downtown lately, so--
The mayor's rumor that that actually occurred to a mayor--
That did occur.
And that's the reason why the ordinance was, because the horse got loose in downtown Orlando.
Yes, that did occur, in fact, occur to a mayor, and he fined himself. That was the first-- he may have even spent the night in jail, maybe. I don't remember exactly, but that's--
He had himself arrested, and he fined himself.
Yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to make an appearance related to the consent agenda?
It appears we do.
Did Jose turn in a card? Did you turn in a card, Jose?
Yes, you can turn in the card now.
Good morning. My name is Jose Colombo, and I live in Palmer back again, in the corner of, right there, that corner over there where they fix that new building, I think it's 216. Some developer, friend of mine, bought the building. We made an inversion of $1 million. So Palmer Construction Group is a stakeholder now in that building. I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for that ride the other day in the bicycle. I did not pass you. Let's get that straight. And I just wanted to say that the whole vision of the plan that was spoken here on the agenda is working, actually. It's really working on the Palmer area because right now, I don't know what--
Maybe--
--that the bike guys left. They're not there anymore. There's no more bike guys in the corner. So I really want to thank you for that. And I'm praying that we get the $30 million so we can get the whole design, so we can get the plans. And I've seen a lot of change in the area of the kids going to the school, honor center. I like that. And, but those things, they take time. It's not going to happen overnight. And trying to find the resources for this is very specific because we take risk in this. We go out and get bonds, and we take risks. It's like any other business. But when we get motivated by God to do this, and we have a vision, it will happen eventually because God will find a way for us to do it. I just wanted to emphasize a little bit better on what's happening in Baltimore and that it's not happening here because we have the means of communicating with the youth. But the whole expression of Baltimore, which you learn from, is that the youth out there is crying out for help for opportunities. And that's the only way they got, they have to express it. They have come to me as a business owner, where I, you know all my, where I came from, from being, from the coalition to being a business owner now with two businesses. And they come to me and they express me that they're sick and tired of doing anything that do not concern the well-being of their mothers and their whole identity. They have to deal with their whole nucleus. I'm sick and tired of seeing my kids in my neighborhood with no shoes and the poverty that we've been fighting. I'm pretty sure Commissioner Regina Hill cries when she sees that. And that's something that we have to emphasize to, to try to bring the wellness of all that and integrate it on the area. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Jose.
What you've been doing. You'll have a nice day. God bless you. And I will never pass you in a bicycle. I'm not that dumb.
Thank you, Jose. Okay, any further requests to speak on general, or on consent agenda? All right, then we will move to commissioners' concerns or comments related to, you can do the whole agenda. We'll start with Commissioner Robert F. Stewart, District Three.
Senior.
Senior.
I'm okay, Mayor.
Commissioner Sheen?
I just have one question on ordinance first reading number six, on the city attorney, assistant city attorneys being appointed by the mayor but not confirmed by City Council. I was just wondering about that because, I mean, we confirm people, everything from the permitting texts and stuff like that. And I was just wondering why that particular change was made. And I did bring it up, but--
Jody told me about that. It's not actually a change, or it's in conflict with both the charter and--
Oh, okay.
--another section of the ordinances. So at least since I've been here, we've never confirmed--
I would never confirm--
Assistant city attorneys. Is that right, Jody?
That is correct. Okay, I was just wondering why that--
So it's not a change, it's a clarification?
It's a clarification. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Commissioner Hill?
I have nothing, sir.
Commissioner Ings?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Under item B2 reference, the Millenia Trail Bridge, I just need to probably maybe see Byron or somebody concerning that. And this is in reference to the minority participation with that particular company, Theobald Construction. And I had the same concern, reference the confirming of the assistant city attorneys, too. So, and Byron, if we can talk maybe on some of, or Jody referenced some of the ordinances. It's really good to see that we've got nine of them on here, Mayor, but they're pretty short. So that made me feel good as I read through that, so.
We've got some more coming, coming waves.
All right, very good. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray?
I'm fine, sir. I'd like to see Chief Mina at the end if I could. Thanks.
Okay, chief. And Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to see Dean Grandin and Linda Ryan Smith.
Okay.
And Mayor, I forgot, if I could see Frank Billingsley. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else feeling bad that they weren't called?
I need to see the whole staff.
I'd like to see Byron Brooks and Rick Howard and--
Forty in District Five Office.
Okay, we'll stand adjourned.